Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Village of Gurnee Planning and Zoning Board meeting for this Wednesday, September 7th, 2016. Could we have a roll call, please?
Bow.
Here.
Crawford.
Here.
McFarland.
Here.
Nordentoff.
Here.
Path.
Here.
Paceyack.
Here.
And Sula.
Present, we do have a quorum, if everyone will please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is an opportunity for public comment from anyone who would care to make a comment about something or ask a question about something that is not on the agenda this evening. Okay, I'll close the floor to the public on that item. Next item is the approval of our minutes from the meeting that was held on August 17th. I do have one minor correction. In the section here where we talk about whether or not we could make an amendment to the zoning ordinance for the deficiency that Mr. Ziegler noted, it says no amendments may be made to the C-6 zoning standards. I think we should put at this time or at this meeting as a, otherwise it sounds like never.
Okay.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
No.
If not, a motion to approve as amended per request would be in order. So both, motion by Mr. Nordentoff, second by Mr., was that Mr. Path or Mr. Paceyack?
That was me.
Mr. Path, okay. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for Warren Township for a zoning map amendment and a special use permit at 79 South Delaney Road. Tracy, the staff report?
Sure. This is a, are these on?
I think so.
Okay. This is a continued hearing from about a month ago. The township has amended their petition. Specifically, they are seeking to rezone and, rezoning and a special use permit for the eastern 73.9 feet of 79 South Delaney Road. This is an amendment, previously they were seeking the rezoning and a special use for the eastern 160 feet of the property. The amendment results in the addition of 25 parking spaces instead of 51 proposed at the August 3rd meeting. There's one thing that I want, would like to just clarify before turning it over to the applicant, and that is that the parking on this site, it does not conform to the current code. Due to historical circumstances over the past 20-plus years, parking on this site is legal mind conforming. In addition, with code changes that we've made in 2015, it's become even less compliant. In 2015, we changed the office parking code to be from, we used to calculate it based upon gross square footage and now, I'm sorry, on net square footage, and now it's calculated on gross square footage. In addition, for office, especially government office, it went from a one per 300 to a one per 250 square foot requirement. Also, the petition tonight will bring the site into conformance with the current codes. So at this point, I think I'll turn it over to the petitioner. I'm sorry, what?
I wanted to say something.
Okay.
As this particular meeting is a continued public hearing, anything that was, any testimony that was given in the prior meeting is considered incorporated by reference, so there's no need to repeat anything that was said at the last time. At the last meeting, we should focus on anything that's changed or has been revised. I would request that anybody that intends to give testimony or ask questions to please stand up and be sworn in by the village attorney.
That's great. You can just rise and raise your right hand. Even if you think, even if you're not certain you're going to present a comment, it's probably easier just to get sworn in all at the same time. And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
We will.
Okay, you may be seated.
Okay, thank you, Brian. All right, at this time, I'll turn the floor, the floor over to the representatives of Warren Township.
I guess we're working. Good evening, welcome back, everyone. My name's Bob Messini, I'm an attorney who was here last time, as you recall, and I'm here again tonight on behalf of my client, Warren Township. You heard Ms. Velkover indicate that the township has amended its petition for what it's requesting here. The township heard what you all had to say last time, frankly. It reviewed the objections that were filed with the village board, and I presume will continue to be on file with the village board by your attorney. And so, in a nutshell, to let everyone know what we're doing, and I trust that most of the commission members know already, initially, what the plan called for was 160 feet, the east 160 feet of the subject property becoming incorporated into the 01 district and part of the existing special use permit to provide additional parking. What the township had proposed to do was to create a passive park on the west side of the property, the remaining part that is the corner of Delaney and Oglesby. It was very clear last time that although we thought, the township thought the part might be a nice idea, it was not a nice idea to the members of the neighborhood. So I hope it's good news that you are hearing that the request now has nothing to do with everything west of the 74 east feet of the subject property. It is going to remain, as it always was, an R3 designation. The house that is there is going to remain there, it's going to be fixed up internally so that it can be rented out by the township, so it will be just like having a neighbor in any one of your homes. As indicated, the new parking area, which is part of this east 74 feet, is going to contain 25 additional parking spaces. Now, I might point out that the R3 lot that's going to be resulting from the township not doing anything to it, frankly, from looking at the tax maps, it's as large as probably all but just a few of the R3 lots in the current neighborhood. Additionally, one of the things that the planner that was here and testified last time was something about the lines of where everything was lining up. And while I suggest that I did not agree with his level of mathematical precision on where those lines should go, I'm happy to let you know, he made his point, and the R3 lot that is going to be there pretty much lines up with the three R3 lots on the south side of Oglesby. In fact, if I'm not mistaken, and it's real close, I think we might extend, or the township's lot might extend actually further to the east than the R3 lots on the south side of Oglesby. So at least on those things, hopefully that is responding to a concern. One of the other things that was brought up at the last meeting was a concern about lighting. Mr. Hill is here again tonight, and he will speak to a relocation of the one, the one light feature that's going to be there. If my memory serves me correctly, commissioners, in the initial plan, I think there was, you're going to end up with two light poles or light fixtures in the parking lot. If I remember correctly, I think it was the village is concerned to have lighting, but the plan now is because of the reduced space, the current light post is going to be relocated to the south and west of its current position. My understanding is from consultation with the village, that at the time that that particular 22-foot pole, one 250-watt bulb, was put in back in 212, it registered .1 to .3 maximum candle readings at the north property line of the township's property. That was well within code. I have not heard at any time in the testimony from the neighborhood or from my conversations with the village that there had been any complaints about that light over the past four years. I'm happy to say, the same light will now be further south and further west of any of the R3 properties in your neighborhood. Consequently, if it wasn't a problem before, it's going to be less of a problem now. Mr. Hill, there will be landscaping, of course, put in around the parking lot, as was mentioned last time, Mr. Hill will speak to that in his comments. There were concerns expressed about drainage by some of the people, and while I don't, I think everything that has been looked at indicates that there really was no drainage issue, he's going to speak briefly to drainage and, I think, a new storm sewer that's being put in, internally on the property, and he's going to make a few comments about traffic with respect to this. Additionally, to hopefully put you all further at ease, I have talked to Mr. Ziegler, and it is my client's intention to administratively, if they do get the approval from the village board for what they are proposing now, they are going to take the necessary administrative steps to essentially combine our west, our east 74 feet, that's going to be part of the parking lot, with the property to the east of there where the building is, so that it's all one piece. None of this is subdivided, so whatever the county requires to get it done, it's going to be done if we receive the approvals. Additionally, and there is going to be the one access point to the new parking lot, which will be as far east as practicable, and I know it hasn't been brought up previously, but in the discussions internally with my client and I, if it is something that the village would like to see and the neighborhood, my client has no problem with putting a no-right turn sign at that access point, so that people won't make the mistake of getting lost in your neighborhood, because we want them to go the right way to get out. So hopefully, that will be something that if it, if the board sees fit to make that as a recommendation, that is something that my client is certainly more than willing to do. So with that, I've concluded my remarks, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Hill.
Thank you, Bob. My name again is Tom Hill, I'm with Erickson Engineering, and I am the civil engineer on the project. As Bob has said, this new plan is changing that it is respectful of the single-family home, and we came about sort of our geometrics here by maintaining a 30-foot backyard off of the deck. We had discussed this with a Realtor, and she thought that would be of benefit to keeping that house as a separate structure by giving it a full yard, and again, the area of this is conforming with the local zoning, and it is larger than a number of the other lots in the area. We are adding 25 spaces to this, which is less than we had asked for previously. We have special events that happen sometimes once a month or once every couple months, training sessions and other sorts of clinics, where we will get vehicles in excess of an additional 30, up to 60 additional vehicles. For those sorts of events, we are going to have a deficiency, and that is something that the township has chosen to accept, and that is reflected in the plan that we have here today. Typically, our parking needs the peak, and they do vary, sometimes they are less, but they can be as high as 46. And that does not account for a few additional buses that might come, that number can vary between 1 to 5, and it also does not account for minor meetings that our local representative or senator may have here as well. So we are asking for a total of 54, which we believe is adequate to meet our general day-to-day needs, but not adequate for those large special events, but that's an issue that we will have to, the township will have to deal with. The landscape plan includes all the appropriate screenings and buffer protections against neighboring areas. We are installing an eight-foot fence along the very northern part of our site at the very western edge abutting, adjoining residential lot. So we're installing an eight-foot fence there and a six-foot fence along the entire new west property line. We are additionally adding rows of arborita and other assorted bushes and trees and internal trees in the parking lot islands in accordance with the municipal ordinance. There are a few existing trees on the office property, they are predominantly green ash, and I think one or two of them might be dead, but those are trees that will have to be removed as a part of this project, and we will conform with, you know, all of the landscaping requirements associated with that. Bob has spoken a little bit to lighting, we are not proposing adding any new light fixtures, we are simply going to relocate one existing light to a more appropriate location in the center of the parking lot. That coupled with the fencing and the additional screening, we think should be a pretty good, make a pretty good effort to avoid impact to the neighbors. Drainage was a comment that came up at our last meeting as well, and a couple people had spoken of possibly a drainage swell or a creek running through our property, and all of you have an exhibit in your handouts showing the existing drainage patterns, including one-foot contours. That shows the watershed and how much area actually drains across our property. There is positive drainage across that, and this is a swell not very dissimilar from what you see between homes in residential subdivisions. It has positive drainage, and that water drains out to the storm sewer in Oglesby. As a part of the proposed condition, we are going to install a storm sewer across our parking lot. We will have a new catch basin installed at the north property line to help intercept those flows and make sure that we are conveying the full 100-year flood appropriately at the same elevations out to Oglesby. We will additionally be providing water quality treatment to help treat the water coming off of this parking lot, and we will also not be increasing the rate of stormwater discharge from this property. Detention is not required for a project of the size, nevertheless, we are going to take this to the step of not increasing the discharge rate, so there are no adverse effects to the surrounding property owners. And additionally, with the issue of traffic, as we had discussed at the previous meetings, there are no expansions of the projects being offered by the township. These are patrons, are people who are already here and are very often parking in the office building on the south side of Oglesby, and sometimes parking in the building to the north. And during, when it gets dark, when there's snow on the ground, we have people that have to walk across conditions that, you know, are certainly not ideal and may have some safety issues, but we are not increasing the traffic in the area, and as Bob said, we're willing to work with the municipality to potentially sign this, so that there are no right turns into the subdivision coming out of here. We don't believe that will be a problem, because the subdivision is not a cut-through subdivision. If somebody goes that way, I believe that driver has probably made a mistake and will turn around promptly. But we are certainly willing to try to help work with the neighbors to control the traffic in that way, and ask that the municipality if they are willing to enforce that. Thank you, is there anything else?
I think the one thing, just want to clarify, the drainage, just so everybody understands, the new drainage storm sewer that you're going to be putting in, when you referred to the north property line, Tom, you're referring to the, to the northern corner of the current property, correct? So this is going to be put in on property that the township already owns and is already used as a parking lot, but it will serve to handle the drainage both from the existing parking lot area and from the new parking lot area. And it will kind of run just to the, I think, just to the east of the existing property line, which I'll remind everyone, will be leaving if the township gets its approval, because we'll see that they get combined in a way so that it will no longer be an issue at all. And additionally, I think the number, I think you might have indicated about two times a month that there are, the traffic, or not the traffic, but the quantity of people coming to the place is over capacity. Actually, it's only about seven or eight times a year that things get to that point.
Thank you. First, I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to thank the township for listening to the concerns and addressing the concerns as you've demonstrated so far, and greatly improving the quality of the materials that we had to review ahead of time, and I appreciate that. Any questions or comments from members of the zoning board? Mr. McFarland?
Just a couple. The, the house that's remaining, I want to confirm, you're thinking that you'll, it's going to remain R3, so it'll be rented or possibly sold as residential property?
If you can keep the microphone with whoever's talking, that helps.
The current plan is it would be rented, because it is a single-family home, and that's what it is in a single-family district. In the future, you know, who can predict? It's possible it could be put on the market, but that was, as Tom, I believe, indicated in his, his comment, there was a discussion, obviously, we looked into it to find out what would keep it desirable, and that 30-foot backyard apparently is, is something that would keep it desirable.
Okay. One other question on the, you mentioned an eight-foot fence across the northern piece. How far does that fence extend from the northwest corner of the property? It's shown on the map, but I'm not clear on how far east it goes.
Yes, it extends from the northwest corner and extends to the east to the property line, the dividing point between the-
So about 30 feet?
Yes, between the residential and office parcels.
All right, that makes sense. So it's going to shield that neighbor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I got, Jim.
Okay, any other questions, comments from members of the zoning board? Mr. Bow.
We have a question, and actually, this is for the petitioner and for Tracy. Our staff report references a bus pad to be constructed?
David knows more.
On a, on a separate note, from comments from the last meeting, the township has applied for installing a bus pad between the sidewalk and Oglesby near the intersection, but that's completely unrelated to this project.
No, I understand that, but I think it's for the benefit of the public here, since they were the ones, you know, who had an issue with this before. Can you show us just generally, and then maybe the, the general location of where this is going to be?
Yeah, it's going to be in this green area right here, just shy of the stop sign.
So it'll be in the village right away?
In the village right away, correct.
Okay. Anything else, Brian?
And then my other question is, you know, concerning the shifting of this lot line, we're going to have, you know, part of the, part of the current lot is going to be zoned R3, and then a portion of it's going to be rezoned to office. Why aren't we just going to have them to apply to subdivision to combine their, all of their office?
They're, they're going to do that.
Okay.
There's an administrative process to do that.
Okay.
And they are committed to doing that, and that can be one of the, the conditions that you place upon the approval tonight.
Okay.
So the goal would be to have two separate lots?
Yes.
With the lot line?
Well, keep, keep the two separate lots that are now, just relocate that lot line, that devising, dividing lot line to the same location as the zoning line.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, at this time, I'm going to open the floor to the public, and I'd like to start with Mr. Capetta, because I understand he was representing the neighborhood, so, Mr. Capetta.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In addition to being retained to represent Marilyn Sullivan resides at 59 North Delaney.
Oh, excuse me, is that microphone on? I mean, okay, yeah, now it is, okay. Okay, it didn't sound like it was coming through.
Maybe I wasn't sitting close enough. I apologize.
They don't seem as hot as they normally are.
Okay. In any event, in addition to representing Marilyn Sullivan, who lives on Delaney, I also am representing the 55 people who signed petitions, and I provided you copies of the names and addresses of those individuals. I'd written to them, and although I was retained by Mrs. Sullivan, they've agreed that the comments I make are on their behalf also. We were advised at noon today that there was a change in the plat, and in the plan, and I appreciate that, but we've not had the opportunity, of course, to review it. I did receive papers this evening, and I did receive some papers earlier today, as I said, at noon, but we haven't had an opportunity to really delve into them. It's certainly apparent to us that many positive steps were taken as a result of the comments we made, comments that the board made, comments that the public made, and we're certainly appreciative of those changes, which include lighting concessions, and most importantly, replating this so those lots can't get divided improperly. It appears that the water retention is being dealt with, and that's good, but we are dealing with a special use permit, and the reason for that is because many conditions occur in these special projects that require conditions, and so we'd like to talk about some possible conditions that could be considered in light of all of the things that go on in the government One of the conditions that we're concerned about is the use of that parking lot, and at one time in the earlier presentation last month, it appeared to us that it was mentioned by the township that they didn't have the intention to use it late in the evening and times like that. So we'd like to have considered the possibility that it be chained closed at 10:00 PM each night or holiday Sundays, some kind of schedule to help reduce the likelihood that it becomes a place where people can park when they really don't have a need to be there at all. So certainly, that could be a condition that we could establish, you could establish in a special use permit that's involved here. Also, unfortunately, I'm sure from everybody's point of view, the tree ordinance was violated, but I understand that the, by, by the township, when they cleared trees off, and I did have a conversation with the village, and they explained to me that they believe there were certain exemptions that applied. However, I would ask that as a condition for this particular special use, that a, that the tree ordinance be strictly enforced regarding the recent unpermitted removal of trees by the township, and that exemptions based upon dead or dying materials be established by a sworn detailed affidavit provided by a licensed and registered arborist. I was told that there were some large number of ash trees on that property. I have other people shaking their heads, no, I'm not an arborist, I don't know. We do have extensive photographs of the property, and so we certainly will have the opportunity to examine what an arborist might do. So to the extent they were exempt, so be it, to the extent they weren't exempt, then, then the tree ordinance should be enforced appropriately, it seems to us. The, the property at 79 Delaney, which is the parcel not involved in this hearing, but it is the parcel that the trees were cleared from, and until tonight was part of the previous petition, since that property has been cleared of trees, we have concern about what's been left now as the residue as between that parcel and Mrs. Sullivan's parcel. And so we'd like to ask the township to consider the possibility of doing something along that border to reestablish the kind of area that was there before the removal of those trees, which was, by the way, unpermitted, and therefore, it seems to me, they should participate in restoring that property in some reasonable way. I do have a concern, and I did read tonight, I hadn't seen it before now, I did read the parking report that was provided this evening, and, and I'm not sure that it's clear in that parking report what the utilization or the use demands are. They don't seem to be based upon the pragmatic use of the property, they seem to be based on the fact that it's an office building with a standard number of parking spaces per government office. And it seems to me, it should be governed more by the programs that are there, and certainly, there should be a way to have an industrial engineer or somebody quantify the number of programs and the number of participant days used to make sure that the use of that facility remains constant from now forward. Now, at the last presentation, we were assured by the township supervisor, I think that's what her position was, that there was not any expansion of the programs, but it seems to me, the baseline should be established in the special use permit, so we don't have this question in future days as to whether it's an expansion or whether it's whatever Also, and, and this is a technical matter, but we're a little perplexed by it, the proposed change that we saw provides for a 10-foot interior side yard requirement. Mr. Ziegler's been very kind and has tried to explain it to me, I'm having difficulty with it, because I read a footnote on page 12-7 of your Gurnee zoning ordinance, which suggests to me that it requires a 30-foot interior space, it's called a buffer in your, in your ordinance. So I, I think the way it's written, maybe not the way it's intended, but the way it's written, that requires a 30-foot buffer, and in that buffer, your footnote says, no parking is permitted, and it has to be kept open. So I question that, I haven't had an opportunity to research it, Mr. Ziegler was very kind to spend time with me, but, but I haven't- clarified it in my mind. I don't think I've clarified it in his mind. And, uh, so we have concern about that, and I want you to be aware of that. So, those are my, oh, I'm sorry.
Just so I understand that particular question, so you're questioning the setback between paved parking and the lot line and the parking lot portion?
I, I think between the, I don't have a direction on this, but I think the top is north, in this case. Between the north boundary of the new lot, as re-designated, and coming down southerly, I think there's a requirement that there be a thirty-foot buffer in your zoning code.
Okay, so we're talking on the parking lot side, the, the setback or buffer?
Where, where it's next to the R3, not where it's, not next to the R3. And here, they've shown a ten-foot.
So what's proposed to be the, the expanded O1? Yes, okay, okay.
Yes, in the expanded O1, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. I just wanna make sure we're talking-
That's why I brought a competent lawyer with me, to help me understand.
Okay, thank you.
Anyway, those are our initial comments. I may later come back, if you don't mind, and cross-examine, if it becomes necessary, depending on how this goes. But that's what I have to say for my opening comments, and I appreciate the opportunity to make them.
And, and please, don't hesitate to raise your hand if you feel we haven't addressed one of your concerns.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else from the public that cares to make a question, ask a question or make a comment? Uh, yes, uh, where's the roving microphone, please?
Hi, good evening. Uh, has the village taken-
Excuse me, you need to state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name's Andrew Humlock. I live at forty-one fifty-one Jeffrey Avenue, Gurnee, Illinois. Uh, my question is, with regards to the additional programs, apparently, there was a flyer that went around that talked about there was gonna be parties, DJ parties, and things like that, um, that we weren't aware of at the last meeting. I don't have a, an example with me, but my question is, I understand that, uh, this facility has a sister organization on Almond Avenue. Uh, with regards to the additional programs, what type of, um, studies or analysis did you do to see if you could have those, these additional programs at the other facility, given the fact that it could accommodate the additional members that come and show up? Thank you.
And, and just so I understand this, this flyer, is this something that came through the neighborhood, or is this something that came from the township?
Uh, I believe it came through the township. I, I saw it from another neighborhood, showed it to me, and, and so, um, I'm not really sure what the original source was, but it was, it had the township information on it.
Okay, thank you. Any other members of the public that would care to make a comment or ask a question? Yes, sir, if you can.
How you doing? I'm Marty Clem, forty-one thirty-seven Jeffrey Avenue. I'm just curious, they've already cut down fifty-four trees. If they extend that parking lot to the west thirty feet, there's only like six remaining trees there, so that means we've lost every tree all the way down. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir?
I won't need that, thanks.
Yeah, sir, you do. You do. You do. Yeah, because meetings are recorded, and if you don't use the microphone-
Okay, I understand. It's just that I got a big mouth. And I'm not an attorney, you can tell I'm not wearing a suit. Uh, my name's Dan Connolly, four-one-five-seven Washington Street. I had a couple of questions that were mentioned. Um, north is the, um, those medical buildings, what are the, this, uh, yeah. I, I would think it's a lot cheaper to build, um, a walkway, driveway, adjacent, um, to the property, rather than expanding this parking lot. I, my big question always was, why more parking in the first place? I understand, and heard that, you know, supposedly special events and so forth, but I could understand if they went up and the, the building expanded, and X amount more employees were going to report to work on a daily basis on a nine-to-five. But if these are for, you know, special events, certainly, the parking lot to the south and the parking lot to the north could be accessed and made safe during the winter, rather than expanding and building, um, a whole new parking lot. I, that's just my, my concern and my issue. Um, I'm also not very thrilled with how this all happened. Um, the manner in which it was done, uh, they were out there cutting down trees, and literally hours later, they were grinding the stumps. Um, I've never seen work that fast before. It felt to, to me, as, as a neighbor, that this was sort of being done quickly behind our backs. Um, this is not a very settling feeling, I think, for anybody in the neighborhood. So, um, I'm wondering if there is any research or contact with, uh, the parking lot neighbors to the north, and of course, the parking lot that already exists, that has a very safe, shovel-able, salt-able walkway for people to park for special events. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Hi, Virginia Dornick, forty-south Delaney Road, Gurnee. My comment is, is that prior to their, as they were proposing this new parking lot, um, they had been offered, Suzanne Simpson was contacted personally by my father, wanting to buy the property of the house. And he understood that it was two separate properties. He knew the Andersons, who had passed away, and knew what their wishes were prior to their passing, which was not to allow the parking lot to be expanded. He sold the property initially to the owners prior to the township buying the property. So he contacted Suzanne Simpson and said, I would be interested in purchasing the house property. She never responded. And now, Mrs. Sullivan has also offered that same condition of that property, to no avail. I mean, you're giving, you're being given some solutions to that property, and now you wanna fix it up and rent it out. It, it just doesn't make sense, when you've got people who are interested in keeping it and fixing it up themselves, and keeping it part of the neighborhood without being a rental.
Thank, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Bill Aben's order, one-thirty south Delaney Road. Um, similar to what one of the other neighbors asked, have all the other options for parking been explored prior to this property being purchased and planned for development of a lot? Is there someone that could answer that?
Uh, the way the process works, um, we receive all the questions from the members of the public, and then we, then we go back and we try to address them en masse. So, um, if you could just bear with us, we'll, we'll get to your question, but just not right this minute.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from members of the public? All right, we'll go back to the, the zoning board and staff to address some of the, address the questions. The, the biggest one, and probably the most emotional one, is, is the tree, is the issue with the tree ordinance and the tree removal. Can, can someone shed some light on that?
I, I will be happy to. Supervisor Simpson did come into our office and talk to one of our clerical staff. Typically, for residential lots, subdivided residential lots, they are exempt from our tree preservation ordinance. This one is not a subdivided lot. This is a meets-and-bounds lot, which is unique in our community. Our staff errantly told them that they were exempt from the woodland preservation ordinance. That being said, they took steps, moved forward to, uh, remove the trees from the site. Upon discovery that, that work was being done, we took a hard look at it, and yes, it did not meet the exemptions from the woodland preservation ordinance. We contacted the township. They have since applied for the permit. Uh, they gave us an inventory of all the trees that were on the site, uh, that were removed by the contractor that they had hired, as well as the species, and a general condition of each of the trees. The vast majority of them were ash trees. Um, as everybody knows, the Emerald Ash Borer has, you know, wreaked havoc throughout our community on ash trees. We do have some photographs, um, that were provided by the contractor, as well as some photographs, when we put up the, the public hearing sign, that you can see there are a number of dead, diseased, you know, dying trees. Um, at this point, in taking the, the contractor's word as to what the, the trees were, we did go through and determine the replacement values for those trees. Those are implemented in the current landscaping plan, in addition to the required buffer trees. So, they have been accounted for, um, as part of the landscaping plan for this project. And mind you, our, our woodland preservation ordinance doesn't, um, you know, it allows for the removal of trees, but it also allows, only if you replace one. It doesn't prevent the removal of, let me rephrase, it does not prevent the removal of trees, it allows you to remove trees, but provides a replacement schedule based upon the size of those trees. So, with the now applied for and received tree removal permit, using the information, the best information that we had that was provided by their contractor, we believe that the proposed plan would be in conformance with the tree preservation ordinance.
So it, it meets the spirit of what the ordinance was intended to do?
Yes.
Okay. Um, there were some questions on, on parking. Um, my understanding of the, from the testimony, that the, the additional parking brings the building into compliance with existing code.
It brings it into compliance with general office. It does not bring it into compliance with government office. Government office would require, I think, sixty-nine or sixty-eight parking spaces, so they'd still be shy.
Okay. And the, um, the setback issue, in terms of between paved parking and, and the lot line?
Yes, and Mr. Capetta and I had a discussion on this just prior to the meeting, and I may have an answer for him. The thirty-foot setback is a principal building setback for the office zoning district when it is adjacent to residential. The parking lot buffer is the ten-foot required green space that is required between parking lots. So our new code is a little bit, it, it takes a little bit of getting used to, um, but based upon the definitions of setbacks that are in the code, those are between principal building and property line, which is what the thirty-foot that he referred to, within the buffer section, the landscape buffer section, which is between the parking lot and the property line, that is just a ten-foot.
Okay. Um, can, can anybody shed any light in terms of the, this issue of the flyers? I mean, is that something that, that came from the, the township, or is that something that came through the neighborhood, or, I mean, the, the flyers that talked, that allegedly talked about expanding programs?
I gotta tell you, when you were here last time, you did a whole lot of, and even in the petition that they presented you with about barbecues and all the rest, I think it was pretty clear in the testimony that was presented last time, that there are no special events of the nature of what was being suggested by the one questioner. And, and my client was very clear on that last time. They indicated that they do have special needs adults who have, in the lower level of this particular building, sometimes outside on the patio, they do cook a barbecue, and those people can go in and out of the building and sit in a, uh, I guess for lack of a better term, a lower-level sunken area. There, there is no intention of having barbecues or outdoor activities. Uh, I don't think, I don't think the increase in the parking lot space would provide for it, uh, both for allowing people to use it, where would they park if you're having that event out there? And certainly, the township has their facility at Almond, where these types of events that are being suggested as, and I gotta say, people, a nefarious idea, are already able to and are taking place out at the Almond Center. But, you know, they're-
I just wanted to address the question.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. It's just, you know, sometimes when incorrect information is repeated over and over again, it sometimes has the danger of becoming a long thing.
As long as the petitioner has a microphone.
I'm sorry, Brian?
Uh, with respect to the request that overnight parking be prohibited, is that something that, that's acceptable by the petitioner?
I, I don't think that's a problem at all. I don't think there's any intention-
Well, not setting a time, but just, you know, the overnight-
Well, I know the one thing that had been talked about, and I think even goes on right now, are some of the, the buses that are, that are there, and I think they're already parked there. So, you know, that type of thing, I, I would hope that it would be allowed to be continued, but you certainly can have your, your vehicles there chained off, uh, you know, and keep out the rest of the world. Because that appears to be what the concern is.
Okay. I mean, I, I have, personally, I have mixed feelings about a chain or a gate, because one could argue that becomes an attractive nuisance, and I'm not sure if, if that's a path that we wanna go down, and I think it's something we, we should consider.
Right, and, and again, uh, ten o'clock, you know, typically, we don't get involved in, in making those recommendations, um, at, at a time as early as that. But for the overnight parking, so that if the police were to see a vehicle that doesn't look like it belongs there, then we know that overnight parking is prohibited.
Right, and I think most of the, and just to clarify, this, but the term "special event" has been thrown around a lot. If you remember, the testimony last time was that the types of events that have created the need sometime for additional parking have been primarily training sessions or conferences of the, of the various people who are providing the counseling services, or getting some of the resources that are available at the center. And I know when Ms. Velkover was talking about, uh, the requirements and the difference between a governmental building and a regular office building, uh, the fact of the matter is, I think if you, if you think about it, this particular use, while a governmental building, the actual use that goes on there is really more of a typical office building. You have counseling services and services provided for special needs adults at this building. It's not like you have the driver's license office or city hall, where people are coming in to pay their water bills, or coming to see Ms. Velkover, or whoever else in planning and zoning, Mr. Ziegler. It, it's, it's a little bit of a, a lower intensity use than I would suggest in your typical government office building.
Thank you. You know, with respect to neighboring properties, just kind of as a procedural aspect, basically, just so the public knows, when petitioners advance a plan, staff, and then now the board, has to consider that. There may be instances where people in the audience, or maybe even people up here, can think of a more ideal way of addressing an issue, uh, but that's, that's not really the way it's framed up, uh, in terms of the work of, of this board. This board has to apply the, the zoning regulations and the building regulations to what's presented. I don't know if the petitioner, you know, wants to add anything more about, um, neighboring, uh, properties, but from the village's perspective, we can't force people to say, give an easement, so that they can use property that isn't under their direct control. Um, so, that may not be a satisfactory answer, answer to some of the, um, issues raised by the public, but, uh, this board will definitely look at this project to make sure that it complies with our zoning and our building standards, uh, and the supplemental information that's been presented to support their request.
Mr. Capetta, did you have any follow-up questions?
I, I do. I, I, I have some concern. It seemed to me that the board, or you in particular, felt that there wasn't information concerning programs that are run by the township. I may have misunderstood that, but if that's the case, I'd like to cite Exhibit C of my written objections, which were previously filed, where we found a typical flyer from the township, and in there identified some of the programs. So, I'm not sure what the point of it all was, but I was getting the impression that, there was an impression there were no programs, or there were minimum programs. And my request was that we quantify it, so we don't have this question in the future, that the number of programs and the number of participant days be memorialized as such as they are. This is a special use permit. That's the reason they have special use permits, so that we can condition these kinds of unusual conditions. And this is unusual, undoubtedly. So, that's my comment in that regard. Also, Mrs. Sullivan is requesting an opportunity somewhere, before we conclude tonight, for an opportunity to address the board. I just call that to your attention, so you're aware of it.
Well, this, this would be the time, because after this, we're gonna close the floor to the public and then deliberate-
to the public and then deliberate amongst the members of the zoning...
Okay, and then a final point, and that's what Mr. Ziegler has pointed out. I have a copy of the Village Gurney ordinance, and at page 6.3 under 01, it says interior side setback, 10-foot unless abutting a residential district, then 30 feet. And then, and that, I'm reading right from the ordinance, and then on page 12.6, it indicates in 3A, "Buffer yards are located within required year or interior side yard setbacks and must be reserved to the planning of material installation and screening as required by the section. No parking spaces or accessory structures are permitted within the required buffered area." So I don't, I don't think this is the most critical issue we're dealing with tonight, but I pointed out again that I'm still confused by it. And so Mrs. Sullivan would like to make some comments, I believe.
Okay, great. I lost track of the roving microphone. Okay. Ms. Sullivan, if you...
Hi, Marilyn Sullivan, 55, South Delaney Gurney. Somebody said something about a six-foot fence all around the, along the edge, assuming between my property. What was the six-foot fence? There was an eight-foot fence and a six-foot fence.
If you could show the diagram.
There will be an eight-foot fence along rural property line at north side. On the west side, along these, there will be a six-foot fence.
The six-foot fence then is, is against my property?
Eight-foot fence will be against your property. Will be eight-foot at this, your property here, will be eight-foot here and six-foot along here.
Behind the Andersons' house, it would be six-foot.
With landscaping, with our supplies and a sort of...
On my side or on your side?
Yes, on your side. On your side.
There would be landscaping. Okay, thank you. And then, as far as the nefarious comments about activities going on in that building, the latest brochure that came out said that it's going to be a drop-off center for teens. The senior center has moved over there. There was something about a touch football, baseball, and a cheerleading. I guess where you, where you can go to learn how to cheerlead, but none of that's nefarious. It's in their brochures. Oh, and the other thing that was still hanging from the last meeting was, you were going to look into whether or not the parking lot and buying the building was already okayed by the township before it even came to the village? We didn't get an answer about that either.
The minutes from 2011?
The minutes from 2011?
No, the...
2011?
Yeah, I think we did look at the, there was a comment made about some meetings in 2011, and that pertained to signage on the property, and staff did look at that, so it did not discuss the parking.
We'll get you the microphone.
I think just, I think, the front row.
Front row, okay. All right. At this time, I'm going to close the floor to the public.
May I make one clarification? And I, Fred, is this the exhibit you were talking about? And this is Exhibit C that Mr. Capetta was referring to, and I, Mrs. Sullivan was also referring to a township brochure. These are brochures that talk about all the programs that are available under this wing anywhere, and all you got to do is take a look at what's in here, and you know you got to have a park around to have this happening. You know, while the offices might be at this location, the events, as we have said, are taking place at other locations, not there. And one of the things Miss Sullivan said was something about touch football. You know, drive past the property, you'll see. There's nothing there to do it. And finally, I do want to make one comment. I know that Mr. Capetta asked you to take a look at the fact that some of the trees are taken off the R3 lot, and he said that it was previously a part of this request. And I would point out, actually, it was never a part of this request, because we were never asking for a change of zoning on that particular part of the property. We were going to effectively put in a park instead of having a single-family home there, but we were never going to be changing, my client was never going to be changing the zoning on it. Thank you very much for your...
Well, and just for clarification on the woodland preservation, as Mr. Ziegler's pointed out, that ordinance was passed, I think, about 12 years ago, and actually, I wasn't privy to some of the discussion, but the institutional knowledge on that was that if property had already been subdivided, so on your, if you had a lot that a developer developed, the thought was not to require property owners to get a permit to change those trees. So what the ordinance says, if it's unsub, an unsubdivided parcel, which in the village historically have been bigger undeveloped lots, for those lots going forward, it was not going to be a prohibition that you couldn't take the trees down, but if they were desirable species of trees, you would have to replace them. So the fact that particular trees got taken down, that's not a violation, but because this happens to be an older neighborhood and it was not a planted lot, unbeknownst apparently to a clerical person in the office, I just want everyone to know, the village is strictly enforcing that requirement, that there be appropriate replacements. The village also does have an arborist, so we're just not, we will be following up if this goes forward from this point on. The village will be very diligent to make sure that the plantings are made sufficient to comply with that ordinance. Again, the woodland preservation ordinance was, if there's trees on property, at the end of the day, we still want to have trees in our neighborhoods, but we do understand with development, trees may have to be relocated. So I did, I do want to make that clarification. The village does have a professional arborist. We're not relying on petitioners just telling us that that's sufficient. That is an administrative aspect, though. That's not necessarily a zoning issue, but the village will follow up with that, and the village was very responsive to the concerns voiced to them by the neighbors, and we thank you for that concern.
I have closed the floor of the public, Ms. Sullivan, but if you want to get the microphone, I'll allow one more question.
No, I...
You need to use the microphone, please.
I just wanted to say, as far as the cheerleading that isn't being done at that building, it's being done in the, at the MRI Center right next door in their backyard.
Thank you. All right, any questions or comments from members of the planning and zoning board?
Mr. Cap, is that in your hand, or you... I think that, I think that Warren Special Rec has made a lot of concessions here to get this done. I understand the idea of having parking across the street, which they're already doing on some occasions, but I think that having one driveway has eliminated a lot of the concerns about the bus stop. They've made the concession of possibly putting a bus stop in. Also, putting this extra parking in will, in a lot of cases, people won't have to be crossing this street in order to get over to the facility. So personally, I think they've done a good job of making some great concessions to make this work for both the community there, surrounding it, and their own facility.
Any other questions or comments? Brian?
No.
Babe?
I was just going to caution that if you do decide to put a condition on the special use permit for the use of the parking lot, chaining it off or whatever, that we would have to check with the fire department just to make sure where their connections are and that we don't block anything that's, actually, that they need to get access to. So, you know, you can put the condition on, but we'll have, staff will have to check with fire department, and it may need to come off or...
Can I ask if that condition is on any other parking lots in that area?
Nope.
Well, that's a question for staff, yeah.
I don't know that it's on any other parking lot that we have.
I can't even think of any examples across town that...
That's what I'm, I don't know of any parking lot that we have that condition on.
I don't see anything wrong with putting a sign up, "No overnight parking," but I'm not in agreement with chaining off the parking lot. I don't, I don't agree it's a good idea.
I agree. I do like the idea of no right turn as you're exiting the parking lot.
Yes, I agree, and that needs to be added.
I assume the township is okay with that? Okay.
No right turns.
Is anybody ready to advance a motion?
We're going to handle this in separate motions, correct? The zoning and the special use?
Yeah, two motions.
Okay, so I've got motions drafted for both. So I will move to recommend approval of Warren Township's petition as amended to rezone the property generally located at the northeast corner of Oglesby Avenue and Delaney Road and legally described in said amended petition from R3 single-family residential to 01 restricted office.
You're specifically talking about that 30-foot strip or whatever it is, right?
Correct, as is legally described in their amended petition.
Okay. Second?
I'll second that.
Second, Mr. McFarland, any discussion?
This is just clarification on that footage, the distance.
It's 74.9. It's about 73, I'm sorry, 73.9.
I misspoke.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
But it's as drawn, is what we're trying to say here.
Okay. Okay. Give the motion a second. No discussion, roll call, please.
Bow.
Yes.
Crawford.
Aye.
McFarland.
Aye.
Nortoff.
Aye.
Path.
Aye.
Paisak.
Aye.
And Sula.
Aye, motion carries. And dealing with the special use permit?
Okay. So I'll move to recommend approval of Warren Township's petition as amended for a special use permit to allow the expansion of a government office use for the property generally located at the northeast corner of Oglesby Avenue and Delaney Road and legally described in said amended petition, subject to the following conditions. One, that any parking lot structure on the site be set back a minimum of 10 feet from the south property line and 16 feet from the north property line; that a six-foot tall opaque solid wood fence be installed west of the property lot expansion; and an eight-foot opaque solid wood fence be constructed on the north side of the parking lot expansion. Three, that the site be used only for parking associated with the government building located directly to the east, and that no building expansion can be accommodated on the site. Four, that the project be constructed substantially in accordance with the revised landscaping plan and the revised lighting plan submitted by the township as part of its amended petition. Five, that the property legally described in the amended petition shall be legally consolidated with the township property located to the east. And six, that no right turn signage shall be installed at the exit of the reconfigured parking lot.
Second. And comment overnight parking prohibition as well?
I amend it that we add one more, no overnight parking sign as well. Okay. And I'll amend it to include condition seven, that the parking lot shall install signage prohibiting overnight parking.
And just to, just to clarify what we're saying here, at the end of the day, there's going to be two lots. There's going to be a shortened R3 lot and a lengthened 01 lot.
Yes.
Okay.
I agree with you on that.
Second? Any other discussion or comments? Roll call, please.
Bow.
Yes.
Crawford.
Aye.
McFarland.
Aye.
Nortoff.
Aye.
Path.
Aye.
Paisak.
Aye.
And Sula.
Aye, motion carries. Just so for the benefit of the public, we are a recommending body to the village board. The village board has the ultimate authority in terms of yea or nay on this particular project. I encourage you to follow listserv to see when it would be on the village board agenda. And once again, I thank the township for the strides that they made to improve the overall project. Next meeting date on the calendar is September 21st. Tracy, do we have anything?
We have a public hearing.
We do have a public hearing, okay. Motion to adjourn, if any order?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. And I hope...